Good evening and welcome to the September 9th, 2024 special work session of the Salisbury City Council. Following the special work session, we will have our regularly scheduled legislative session and then a closed session. Please note the closed session that was scheduled for last Monday did not occur due to lack of an in-person quorum. That meeting was rescheduled to this evening. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors. You came in and make a right and proceed to the stairwell. If that hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. Public comment will be heard on the presented item prior to the conclusion of the special work session. If you wish to speak, please complete a form from the table by the door and give it to the city clerk, Julie. You will have three minutes. Please silence your cell phones. Before our special work session, I do have a question for legal on a matter of procedure. Ms. Wilshay, I have a question regarding some things that have been kind of mentioned and known in the public with just in general. I know that our mayor did seek a second legal opinion on a matter. It's brought up a question that I have personally, I know a council may have, that I know, you know, I read our charter, but given our charter, how should second legal opinions be obtained? And how does that process look like moving forward?
Certainly. So Article 9 of our charter, which governs the Department of Law, specifically SC 9-1, provides that the city solicitor and any assistant city solicitors shall be appointed by and shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor and the majority of the full council. The compensation of the city solicitor and any city assistant city solicitors shall be determined by the council. Additional legal counsel may be authorized and/or retained from time to time by the council. That is from our charter verbatim. So there is no authority in the charter for the mayor to retain legal counsel of his or her own. The mayor can only retain additional legal counsel when authorized by this council. In the past, council has authorized additional legal counsel, most recently through Resolution 3119, and that is where council appointed Rena Patel, a special legal counsel for the city, and to act on behalf of the city when my firm has a conflict. Like myself, Ms. Patel serves at the pleasure of both mayor and the majority of this council. So to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any resolution that was passed by this council that authorized the mayor to retain the specific second legal opinion that has been made public. She either acted as his own legal counsel or his counsel to the mayor and council, which is otherwise known as the city.
Okay. And so given that, then unless it's brought forth through the process you just presented, can that opinion or consultation or words thereafter from those attorneys be used to conduct or make a decision on the city business?
That is not an opinion for the city. That is, the city solicitor has the duty, which is spelled out in SC 9-3, and the city solicitor is legal advisor to the city. It says, "The city solicitor and any assistant city solicitors shall be the legal advisors of the city of Salisbury and shall have general supervision and direction of all legal business of the city."
Thank you. And final question, so then any compensation that cannot be, you know, put on the city taxpayers unless it is brought through that process?
Correct. That, as I read in SC 9-1, it says the compensation of the city solicitor and any assistant city solicitor shall be determined by council.
Thank you, Ms. Wilshay. At this time, I will recuse myself from the remainder of the work session due to a conflict of interest. Vice President Angela Blake will now take over the meeting.
Thank you, President Dowdy. I would like to present a resolution to council, and this resolution communicates that the council wishes to ensure that the city meets its contractual obligations in a timely fashion. And through this resolution confirms that I, myself, Angela Blake, as the vice president of the council, may execute closing documents and any other documents necessary to make the closing on behalf of the city, to convey and convey it to Mitchell Landing Apartment Complex from the city of Salisbury to the Wycomico County Housing Authority. So initially, we're going to get council questions and thoughts about that, about the resolution that's been proposed.
Vice President Blake, first, I have one question. Since we are the legislative branch, do we have the authority to sign off on something that would normally be an executive procedure, so to speak? That's my first question.
And I would like to answer that. Executing settlement documents to effectuate a contractual obligation is neither a legislative nor executive function. It is purely a ministerial act at this point. It involves no exercise of discretion, so the person signing can be anybody who has authority to act as an agent on behalf of the city. That is my position.
Okay. My second question is, I am a huge, huge advocate of Mitchell Landing happening, and we get it done sooner than later. My reasoning is because by my definition, it is one of the few projects that does address affordable slash attainable housing for people, and we are in dire need of that. With that said, I only have a question as to why it's taken so long for this to happen. It happened, I believe, anytime after December in 2021. This could have been put in place. City could have done their portion. It didn't happen. I don't know why. It was a different administration. And I feel that based upon everything I have read about this, that if there is a letter, a commitment letter of a loan from a qualified lender, obviously, I say we do it tomorrow and get it done. I just don't know what the holdup has been for the last, what, December 2021 until now. So repairs could have been done, people could have been living there. So until, I guess I'm asking for a letter, submitting a letter of a qualified loan, basically, and then...
There's a commitment letter in your email.
Oh, I got, okay.
Yeah, a commitment letter has been sent to all the council.
We just got it this afternoon, yeah.
We just got it this afternoon. It's in your email. I can only speak from my perspective, being on the council that long. Projects of this nature, of this magnitude, generally take this long to come through the pipeline without speaking for developers or other people in contracts and all of that, that every project of this magnitude with complicated layers or different parties involved and things, a lot of parts in motion, it often takes several years for all of those things to come together and then to execute it. So that would be, I think, the most simplest way to say it, but that is a big piece of it. This is, you know, estate money, you know, the city's commitment, the other agency's commitment, and it takes a while to get all that stuff on board and in motion, documents drawn up and ready to go. Settlement had been scheduled and had been known that we can't always control the dates that are scheduled for settlement, so everyone was well aware of the settlement date. So I think that's a piece of some of the timeline issues.
I don't, I don't...
I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions, but I do have some statements I'd like to make. This is predominantly in my district. It has been three long years. I've watched this place go down. I've talked to the council numerous of times about the management. Nothing had ever been done. We made money on this development. There are people who are living still in this development, and it looks like a third-world country over there to me. Buildings boarded up, people living in it. It needs to be done as of ASAP today. It needs to be taken care of. They need to, they got the commitment letter, let's go move forward with this because I cannot understand for the life of me how in District 1 this has happened, but I do understand why this has happened because it is a predominantly poverty-stricken minority-majority community. And I have about had it up to here with the antics, all the antics. Let's get this done and done today. These people need decent, viable housing to live in. I have friends, people that I know that are living over there, and they don't live like that, but because of the situation with our homelessness, they can't afford to go anywhere else, so they have to live under these conditions, and it's sinful. It's sad. And I have cried today because of this, because we should not have people living in these conditions. We're talking about homelessness, attainable housing, fair and affordable housing. We have it right in our hands. Use it to fulfill people's lives, their dreams. People want homes. Everybody out here is homeless. It's not homeless because they want to be. It's homeless because they had to be. They had no other choice. Different things happen in our life. We need to step forward today and make this the last day that we have to even discuss this on the table. I'm tired. Those people are tired. I have dealt with those people to the point where I had to actually have people moved. I had to get the city to move them out. They didn't even want to move them out. I'm gonna tell you about the city. I'm gonna tell you. They didn't even want to move the people. They wanted the people to find housing for themselves and to move themselves. Why? For what? It's not their fault that you allowed your house to get in this condition, your development to get in this condition. You allowed it to happen, so now you have to pay the piper. So now it's time to do what's right. So I'm done with what I said. I mean what I say, and whatever I have to do to get this going, this is what I'm going to do. I'm gonna make it right for the people, not just for my district, but for the city of Salisbury.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back and address the timeline issue. Also, keep in mind that this was when we were coming out of COVID. Courts were extremely backed up. Legal was extremely backed up. So there was also just, you know, the fact that we had a worldwide pandemic going on that we were just coming out of when this first started. So add that into couple, it's amazing it's gotten, it's getting done in a timely manner, but not soon enough for some people, but it really, it needs to get done ASAP.
Vice President Blake, I just want a second.
No, you get a chance in just a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That was it. I just wanted to point out, you know, we kind of forget that there was a whole worldwide pandemic.
Right.
And I know it's easy, but yeah.
And I think also, especially the last nine months with Mayor Taylor, has had the, they've been several times ready to move forward with this, and Mayor Taylor has had a different vision with this whole project, which he'll have a chance to address here in a second. But so that, this whole nine months too is also part of the delay is that the administration, the current administration has had different ideas of how this contract should go forward. But we do have...
Let's not do the finger point.
We do have, we do have, we do have the contract, and the city does have contractual obligations to move it forward. Any other, any other council comments?
Let's not do the finger point. I'm tired of that.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm tired of that.
I just want to say...
Just hold, hold a minute, Mayor.
Yeah. Mayor, we'll call on you when it's your turn.
It's not just his fault. It's a whole lot of the city of Salisbury's fault. I'm not gonna take, let them take the blame, all the blame for this because it transpired from back in 2020. Okay? So I'm not gonna sit here and point no finger at no one person for what has happened. All of us had something to do with it, maybe not you, and maybe not you, but I was on this council at that particular time. So I'm just not gonna let somebody take the blame for something that, just nine months ago. This has been trickling on for three years, and I want to stop the finger pointing and blaming people. Let's do what we need to do. Let's do what's right.
That's, and the nine, the factual piece of it is, in the last nine months, there has, the factual piece of this is, Councilwoman Jackson, it is correct, it's been going on for several years, and you have brought it up many times for the council prior, administration prior to fix it. But also, I was asked the question of what was part of the holdup, and part of the holdup was that there is a different vision with the current administration versus what the contract actually says. So, okay.
Let me just add a few things if I can't speak.
I'm about ready to call on you. Okay, any other questions before I turn it over to the mayor for comments from the council? Mayor, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I just want to say a few things. So when I came on board, I became aware of this contract, and to be honest with you, I was very disappointed that we were not getting technically any money for the property. Now, we can disagree whether that's true, whether that's good or bad, but they were assuming a loan that was going to be forgiven, and I get that. And I handled it, I gotta be honest. When I had my meeting with you guys, I handled that poorly. I gotta admit. I was upset, I was angry. I thought that really that wasn't in the best interest of the city, and I was reacting that way, and I never got a chance to really reconnect with you guys on the topic. Having said that, and I apologize, we haven't had any communications. I only know about this settlement within the last 10 days, an actual physical settlement. And when I, when we got to that point, I was always looking, all I was looking for was I'd given up on the idea of trying to get anything for the property, rather I was just trying to get a commitment letter for the financing to be sure that Councilman Jack, April Jackson and all the people I've met on the West Side, include people that live in Mitchell Landing, get this project going and gets back online. And so when I asked for that, we got into a disagreement of whether it was required, which I think is, is an obvious thing. It is required in the contract. Now, we got it this afternoon, which I'm grateful that we did. I'm reading it over, and there's a little bit of things I'd like to clarify, but beyond that, I am comfortable with closing now that we have this and we can get some clarification on the commitment letter from CDA, which was all I was asking. It was all I was asking for in the 11th hour. I'd given up on the notion of actually getting money for the property, although I think that was unfortunate. That's neither here nor there at this point. So having said that, that's all I want to see, just like Councilman Jackson, Sharon, anybody at this table, we need it, we need it quickly, and that was the reason why I was, in this last eight-day window, was holding such a hard line, which gave birth to this, to this ordinance or this resolution, rather. So in any event, so the point is, I'm making on this point is, there's no reason for a resolution of any kind, regardless of its legality, because I'm prepared to close now that we've got a commitment letter, and again, with a couple of clarifications. So that's all I wanted to say on that.
Now, this is on record.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I'm with you, sis.
The closing date is currently set for 9/11, so in two days.
Yeah, it seems to be, yeah. We should probably get everybody tomorrow, or should we probably get a button up tomorrow? On the letter, the commitment letter, I just want to make sure we've got a couple of terms squared away.
What's a couple of terms?
Yeah.
Well, no, no, just a technical thing. I mean, again, they're selling some 99% of the thing. I wanted to understand the dynamics of that. What's going on with that? And that's all I wanted to clarify, but I don't think it's anything material, but I just want to make sure it's, I understand it.
So...
Well, because...
I'm gonna ask you questions.
Sure.
Like I said, this is my district, and I need to know because I need to make this a final decision that you are going to sign off on this.
Yeah.
Whether you, excuse me?
Yes.
Okay.
So the closing is the 11th?
The clarification was more for personal, like I understand the deal. I'm, you know, at this point, the council is committed to selling it in certain conditions, in the current conditions, so there's not more I can add to that.
One thing about me, and I can honestly tell you, I'm for what's right.
Okay.
I'm not for no bull crap. I'm for what's right.
Yeah.
I'm directly for the people. Not, this is not about me. This is about the people that I serve and that we serve.
Right.
Because I'm not gonna say just somebody in my district's gonna want to move in there. Somebody from any district may want to move in there.
Sure.
And we've just got to make this a place where people can move in. I mean, and, and just do this and do it right. I mean, holding back, I'm not blaming you. Everybody up here takes responsibility for some of this.
Yeah.
I'd like to clarify, though, that we have closing on the 11th, and we've been to the, to the ninth inning, you know, two outs, you know, you know, couple strikes. So if in fact the closing document doesn't get clarified enough for what your purposes are or needs are, then there could be back and forth with the closing document, I'm sorry, excuse me, the commitment letter. So what guarantee is there that, because we have closing on the only 11th for this? That's this, this week. I believe it's 3rd. Is it Wednesday? Okay, excuse me, Wednesday. So what is the guarantee that, because if you need clarifications on the commitment letter, and it goes back to the people that are providing the commitment letter, and then it comes back to you, and then we got a back and forth volley with wording, that could take, we all know that could take several more weeks.
Like I said, let me clarify. Clarification for the commitment letter is just for my personal notifications, not, just to understand what's going on. It has nothing to do with the closing.
Okay.
Okay.
And if I may, I just would like to interject that the resolution, it was not drafted to confer any authority on Mrs. Blake or Council Vice President Blake to sign or require her to sign. It was merely confirming the fact that she could sign on behalf of the city.
We could go ahead and, we could go ahead and...
Do the resolution.
Do the resolution, and then in the event if the mayor decides to not sign the closing, then at that point, Vice President Blake would have the authority to do so.
To sign it.
His word is the contract.
I agree.
It's binding.
I don't see any need for the resolution. Yep.
It's recorded. He said it, and I asked him. Not one time, I said, you know, this is documented. This is documentation.
I just, I know, I will say, I will say, I will say, we, yes, we have been here before, and this is something where I am not comfortable. I like having a safety net, and this would be just a safety net, to make sure that this gets done on the 11th, one way or another. I don't care how it gets done. I just want it done, much like April. We need to get this done. So I am for the resolution still, just to make sure that we have that safety net, just in case, because I just do not have the ability to trust that we will be able to get through the commitment letter and not have questions or delays going forward. We have had plenty of delays, and we've had too many delays at this point. So that is, that's, at this, at this point, it doesn't hurt anything to pass the resolution, and it could actually benefit in the event that the mayor changes his mind. So I know we want to hope that he doesn't, but in the event he does, we have that safety net. So it doesn't, it doesn't hurt anything to do this. And as the, as the attorney said, it's not conveying any special powers or anything like that. It's just reaffirming the ability for Vice President Blake. It does not, it does no harm to pass this resolution at this point.
We have, we have been down this road before. I know, I know that when administration and, and council has met, we've talked about it in detail. It's kind of been volleyed back and forth, and I think it's better to have it and not need it than need it, not have it, per grandpa Blake would say.
A couple of things, I just want to respond to that.
Hold on, please. Thank you. So I just...
If you don't mind.
No, I do mind. I'm not finished speaking.
I'd like to say something.
I understand, I understand that, but I wasn't done speaking. I will come to you, Mayor Taylor, when I'm, when I was, when I'm done speaking. Okay, thank you. So all I was explaining is, it's just better to have it and not need it, and then to, you know, need it, not have it. And the closing, the second scheduled closing is the 11th, and that's 48 hours away. We have our commitment letter, which was, which was one of the requirements or concerns that you had. So that had been addressed, that was addressed, which I think was very good to make sure that we addressed that, and we, it was addressed, and, but to make sure we get to the finish line on this and that this project absolutely gets off the drawing board into the community as shovel-ready, I think the backup for the resolution is probably prudent. Mayor Taylor, you said you had some final comments?
I'm just gonna couple of things. I mean, like I said, the settlement date was only eight days out when I got notification. The only one was Friday, and it was only because of, again, the condition of, in the contract of needing a CDA commitment, which came today at 4 o'clock. So to make some kind of question like, I've been down this road before, I don't know what that even means. Secondly, I think any title company worth their weight is gonna question whether or not, in a, in a merril form of government, that somebody else can sign off on behalf of the city and think they have good title. I mean, I think that's, I don't want to go down that road, but I'm just saying, what does that even mean? There's no, nothing in our provision of our charter allowing for that sort of thing. So at the end of the day, I just want to say, listen, I'm trying to do, in the best interest of the people living in Mitchell Landing, and get this stuff going in the right direction. A commitment letter was part of the contract. All I was asking for was to have it. We got it today at 4 o'clock. I declare, you know, like I said, I want to clarify a few things because nothing to do with the closing. I will sign off on the closing, but I just feel like this is a little bit of a, I don't know what it is.
Vice President, I have one feeling. My word is my word. What you see is what you get. You may not agree with me, but that's okay. I am with Councilwoman beside me, Jackson, when, I agree, if mayor's word, that should be good enough, and if it isn't, I will be the first to apologize for supporting him at honoring his word. I do not see a need for the resolution. I think that's a question of trust, and I think there are enough issues that have been going on in this council and between the mayor's office and the city council, and I think it's time that we put things to rest.
I want to ask our legal, now he said he's gonna do it, now how bonding is that as far as, as a contract?
You can change it.
As far as him saying he's gonna sign it by word? That's all I want to know. And I take his word, but I want to make sure that this does get done.
Yeah, he stated it on the record. I think that that's sufficient.
Okay. That's all I want to know. I just want to be, I want no mess out of this. I don't want this to come back at all. I want to make sure, and I'm, Mayor Taylor, I'm trusting and believing you to do this.
You can believe me, Jackson, you're fine.
I'm trusting and believing you to do this. If you don't do it, you're gonna have...
I'm sure. I'm sure.
I'm gonna tell you.
Never pleasant.
And I could be just as nasty as I can be nice.
I know.
And I don't want to be there. I don't want to go there, but I want this project done.
I measured that before I said it. Okay.
We will, is that council, is that it? Should I go on to public comments in regards to the resolution?
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Molly Hiligas, public comments?
Do I have three minutes or more?
Yes.
Three minutes, okay. I'm Molly Hiligas, resident of the city of Salisbury at 141 North Park Drive. Most people know that I am a huge affordable housing advocate. This goes all the way back to when I lived in Mississippi during Hurricane Katrina in 2005. My career shifted from HR to banking to specifically help people get back into homes. Housing is my passion. With regards to the Mitchell Landing discussion, while I understand that the mayor's wanting to do some extra due diligence and have a third party look at the original contract, I too looked at the charter and was concerned about him hiring additional counsel. Further, I read the opinion from Mr. Benson, and I was surprised that he didn't disclose that he already knew about the project as he served as interim attorney to the Wycomico County Council during an open work session on April 16th, 2024, when their normal attorney was out on sick leave, and I brought a copy of those open work session minutes for your reference. My next point is that I've heard grumblings, actually today, that the mayor believes the cost to rehab should be lower and that the developer is getting the property for free or nearly free. The fact is that the developer is assuming a loan from the state of Maryland for 1.5 million. That, my friends, is not free. While the developer is using low-income housing tax credits and other incentives to rehab this project, there are complicated federal rules and requirements that drive up the costs in ways that I don't have time to outline in three minutes. I'd be happy to provide more information to anyone interested. I feel that a public, a public city work session where Mr. Tom Aid from Green Street Housing is invited would go a long way to clarify any issues for this and future developments, but it seems, maybe it'd be better for future developments, seems that this one is, is moving forward. I would like to clarify, who needs the subsidized affordable housing that Mitchell Landing provides? These are people working skilled or non-skill jobs, mostly with families. They are your bank tellers, your grocery cashiers, auto repair folks, school-based classroom aides, CNAs, and so on. They are disabled older adults on fixed incomes. We need these people to have stable housing. These families that are literally desperate to access affordable housing that Mitchell Landing could provide cannot afford unnecessary delays for this project or any other affordable housing project in the city limits. There's a proverb that says the road... There's a proverb that says the road to hell is paved with good intentions. Leadership course I attended morphed this into intentions equal results, and this always stuck with me. Saying that you support something like affordable housing, but then actually doing something different, I have a problem with. I believe the families you serve would like to see you approve more projects that actually serve them with what they need, which is safety and affordable housing. Anything less seems like you're serving, honestly, someone else. Not sure who. The last point that I have is that a city resident, as a city resident, my city taxes are already subsidizing this project. If Green Street Housing walks away, which appears they're not going to, but if they, if they were to, which they would have the right, the city would be forced to pay back the $1.5 million deferred loan plus 10 years of deferred interest of $3.5 million. They would also have the right to sue the city for damages. I might add that city property taxes have gone up by 26% in the last 10 years. I'd be very angry if my taxes increased again because of inaction on this or any other transaction related to affordable housing. Lastly, I don't know how many times I'm going to have to beat the drum and say, we need to increase the supply of housing, all types of housing, folks. For the sake of low-income families, please move forward to rehab Mitchell Landing to be turned back into subsidized housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hiligas. Robert Taylor?
Good evening, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident. First thing I want to do is give a big shout-out and congratulations to somebody named Taylor, not me, the other Taylor. He's finally gotten the commitment letters from the state. Now, the resolution that's been proposed wasn't going to do that. The idea was for Ms. Blake to go sailing ahead and sign the documents, come hell or high water, meaning whether or not we got the commitment letters. Now, I also want to say that I disagree with Ashley. There is no basis at all for anybody on the council to exercise the executive branch's function, and it would be illegal to do so. Now, you said, Ashley, oh, it's just a ministerial thing. Yeah, writing a name on a paper, you're right, but the purpose of that is to close a contract, and that's an executive function, and I think you're dead wrong. And, and find some cases to support you, because I don't think you can find any. So anyway, I think we need to proceed ahead on this. I've settled some pretty large loans, $70 million on the new Salisbury Mall, $40 million on University Orchard. It is not at all unusual for commitment letters to have little things in them that require some tweaking here and there. It is also not unusual for settlements to be postponed a day, two days, maybe even a week, to get these things taken care of. I haven't, I don't know about these commitment letters, so I can't comment in that regard, but it is not unusual. Now, the rest of my time, I want to devote to what the real background is here, and I think Ms. Jackson has kind of hit it on the head already. Jake Day let this property go to pot. He was the mayor for almost eight years, and that's when this happened. He did not do anything to repair the property, meaning putting anything in the budget to do it. He also, my understanding is, let this loan that Ms. Hiligas mentioned a few minutes ago go into default. I think that's been in default for a number of years. So let's put the blame where the blame really should be here. It's on Jake Day. And that's, he's created this situation, and now we're digging ourselves out of it. And that's the long and short of it, and I thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Mallow? All right.
First off, I'm Suzanne Mallow, 504 Druid Hill Avenue. I am definitely, this needs to move forward. Affordable housing is so important and so very much needed to address many of the homeless and, and people that just need stability through a home in their lives and in their family's lives. I am also concerned about the risk of the city getting sued for this amount. And I understand, Randy, you know, you, yes, you will sign this thing on, on Wednesday, but let's, let's just, life happens to us sometimes. My brother-in-law was supposed to speak at a major conference this summer and had a major stroke that morning. Why not have a backup plan? And that's all, I, so that we do not find ourself. I mean, you could not be able to get out of bed that morning. You know, yeah, you say you're going to sign it. Yeah, I believe that. Okay. But let's have a backup plan. That just makes sense. This has to be done. This community needs it. So let's do everything we can to make it happen.
Thank you. And this says Nikki. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. This is my first time at one of these, so bear with me. I'm not, I don't know politics really good, but I come to speak on behalf of the homeless community. And when I say homeless community, I, I look at our single families. I look at our elder community. I look at our veterans' community. And growing up, my dad was a Vietnam vet, and I didn't understand a lot of the things that he had to go through to take care of us, because before Vietnam, he lived in poverty. And my thing is, when will we be able to live and not constantly survive? And I say that because it's a, it's a, it's a constant cycle, and it's like no matter what you do to, to get ahead, it's always something that's preventing you. I, I was living in Ocean City for a while, for about five years now. Everything was going good. My landlord decided she wanted to sell her condo. Within that time, I had surgery. I lost my job. My husband, he was, he's, he's a disabled vet. He's hard of hearing and everything, and it's like, yesterday, everything was going so good, then the next, the next minute, it's like, now, here it is. We have to survive all over again. And we were prepared for that, but no child, no family should have to raise their child and train their child to prepare for homelessness. You shouldn't have to prepare your child that no matter what you do for your community, what you do for your society, you're going to always have to plan to, plan to be homeless. There's so many different things that we have to plan for our futures, but this is becoming a problem because we have vets who have given their lives, who can't, who don't know if today, if they have to, can they focus on their health, or do they have to worry about if I'm going to be homeless? You know, I was just talking to Molly earlier today. You know, I'm disabled. And my doctors clearly told me, in order for me to be able to get medicated, I have to run up a $6,200 bill. So now my, now I'm in debt. Now my credit is bad. So how can I get a house? If now I have to put myself in, all of these situations, and what about that family, the single mother or the single father, who has to take care of all of their children? But now I'm going to have to worry about my, pay my rent or get my lights cut off. But then I get my lights cut off, then my children are going to get taken care, taken away from me. I've talked to so many young kids who are trying to go through college, but now it's like, finish putting myself through college, which means I don't have to live in my car, because now I can't afford to pay for rent, decent rent. Here it is, a minimum of, I say, disability, you could get $1,500 a month. These days, you go to apply for a house. First of all, I've never heard of a $50 application fee.
Hi.
But now you have to pay $50 to apply for the house. You know how many times?
It's time.
Oh.
Sorry, ma'am.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I could continue. Sorry, my bad.
Stephen Feliciano? Oh, is it? Sorry.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephen Feliciano. I'm a resident of the city of Salisbury, and I just want to say that I love this city. I've been here since 2007. I love the people in it. Despite our differences, I love it. Let me just, this is very intimidating, this, this podium here. But I, I'd like to at least give a different perspective. I, I'd like to see a little bit more empathy and compassion out of this body, okay? There's a lot of ego going on, a lot of blaming. People are forgetting who the true stakeholders of these decisions that we make here. It's the citizens. It's for them we're here. Let's have a little bit more patience with each other. Let's be a little bit more kinder to each other. Doesn't cost anything. Cost analysis for kindness, it's in the roof. Come on. Something came to me, and I just wanted to share. It's a, it's a quote by George Bernard Shaw. "This is the true joy in life, being used for a purpose recognized by yourself as a mighty one, being a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little clod of ailments and grievances, complaining that the world will not devote itself to making you happy. I am of the opinion that my life belongs to the whole of the community, and as long as I live, it is my privilege to do for it what I can. I want to be thoroughly used when I die. For the harder I work, the more I live. I rejoice in life for its own sake. Life is no brief candle to me. It is a sort of splendid torch, which I have got hold of for the moment, that I want to make it burn as brightly as possible before handing it to my future generations." Please be more kind, be more patient, and don't forget the citizens. You guys, I'm here for the citizens. You are here for the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sheila McQuinn?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to take this few moments to bring another point of view. The point of view I want to bring forward, as I, first of all, I love everything that's gone on here, which is tremendous. I want to bring forth the notion that when we're looking about those around us and the basic needs, everybody needs food, shelter, and clothing. That's, it's not debatable. And it's not only about caring for those that don't, but I want to bring, because we all feel about that, but I want to bring the point from my background in neuroscience, that those of us who are not in need, when you see need that is unmet and you avert your eyes, it still hurts you. Because when you see trauma, just because it's not in your conscious mind, doesn't mean that it didn't take residence in a subconscious neural network. So when you're caring for those who can't care for themselves, you're also caring for all the others that have entrusted our government to do that efficiently, because we all can't run out with a hammer and pound, pound the nails. That's what our government is tasked with to do efficiently. So I just want to bring to your attention that you're not only helping those that cannot help themselves, but you're also doing the things that need to be done to ensure our entire community prospers and prospers neurologically and prospers through humanity, because where we go one, we go all. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Bratton?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Bratton. I'm a city Salisbury resident for many, many years. And one of the things that I think is going on here today, this particular meeting, a special work session, was to decide whether or not an ordinance needed to go forward to the, to this regular session. And I think we veered off of that track, because there's not one person in this room that, if I had to show your hands right now or stand up, wouldn't say housing is important. Not a single one of you would stay seated, because it is important. Maslow's basic hierarchy, food, water, shelter, they're all at the bottom levels of basic needs. Learned that back in college many years ago, and I, I don't think there's anybody that would dispute that. So for all of us to say, we want this to go forward, you're like preaching to the choir, because we all do want it to see it go to fruition. I'm saying that at this point, we have a commitment letter. We have a mayor who stood up for the fact that in the city of Salisbury, ordinances and contracts, there was a contract proffered, and there were pieces of it that were missing, and as our executive person, he felt that those parts of the contract needed to be fulfilled before he would go forward. And I believe that is his job and his role, to read those contracts in their, in their completeness and make sure that all the dots and crosses are there, and he did that for us as a group of citizens. That has now happened. There are a few little things that in the letter of commitment that he's asking for. I mean, I've read all the documents. I've read so much, I, I don't, I don't read books, and I think I could have read, read the, one of those big ones by now. All the, I could have read every single Harry Potter book with all the stuff I've been reading. But I'd like to see the, the word of honor and the word of trust be held. And if there are issues with the, with the contract letter that has now been proffered as of four o'clock this afternoon, after 2021 signing of a commitment, a letter, a contract, 2021, the latter part of the year of 2021, and now today in the eighth hour, seventh hour, we got the letter that's in that contract, if there's something that's of, of any controversy, I would believe that he has the right to, to say, wait a minute, I need to make sure this is right for our citizenry, and I would challenge, if this ordinance goes forward and it gets voted on, and Vice President Angela Blake is the person who's then in that seat, that she too would take up the fact that there's something not right about the contract letter and ask for more clarification on it before signing it. So I think just signing it without understanding and making sure that it's completely and 100% legal and right is the, is the what we need to do. And at this point, I say that this ordinance, this particular, whatever it's called, is it a resolution, resolution should not go forward, in my opinion, to the general meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Outen?
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Megan Outen. I don't really need to introduce myself to you all, because I know you all very well, having worked on you all with the city council. But lifelong Salisbury city resident and resident of Wycomico County, and as you all know, I've been a very vocal advocate for affordable housing for many years. And as a young professional and lifelong resident, I wanted to speak on it, because not only have I witnessed the hurt that this lack of affordable housing is having on our community, I've personally experienced it. The troubling rise and lack of affordable housing is hurting our community. It's not just about housing being out of reach for so many. It is about the larger impact on our community as a whole. I just want to second many of the comments that Ms. Hiligas mentioned, and I'm not going to repeat most of what she mentioned in regards to specifically all the issues around Mitchell's Landing, but I did want to provide some of my own perspective, as a former councilwoman who was a part of the major discussion we had here in the fall around Mitchell's Landing when it was first brought to our attention. And during that time, I had the opportunity to meet with several of the residents of Mitchell's Landing with Councilman Jackson. We had a phenomenal conversation with the residents there, and these individuals are senior residents. They are single parents that are taking care of their disabled children, and they are being directly hurt by these delays that we've seen surrounding Mitchell's Landing. Mitchell's Landing is a perfect example of the bigger picture of why affordable housing is more than just providing a roof over someone's head. It's the foundation for a thriving, healthy, and stable community. When families have a safe and affordable place to call home, we're going to see improvements across the board. We're going to see healthier children, better education outcomes, reduced crime, and stronger, stronger local economies. Affordable housing. Affordable housing is going to enable people to contribute to the community without the constant worry of where they will live next month. So I just want to say thank you to the council, and I just wanted to extend my gratitude for you all for continuing to recognize the importance of keeping Salisbury a housing-first city, and by prioritizing affordable housing, not only are you going to be providing the immediate needs of our residents, you're investing in the long-term health of our community. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's David Layfield. I'm principal and founder of Green Street Housing. We are the developer of this project, along with our joint venture partner, the Wycomico Housing Authority. Since I only have three minutes to speak, and there's been eight months of grievances and inappropriate behavior and sometimes criminal acts on the part of the mayor to facilitate the killing of the project, I can't answer all of the questions. But if you put me down here, I can answer technical questions about how, why it's taken so long. It's not just COVID, it's not just things take a long time. I have very specific answers, take a lot longer than three minutes to give them to you, but I'm happy to do so. I have devoted my life to creating affordable housing opportunities for low-income people. I founded a website called Affordable Housing Online, and it's a national platform, and I am known nationally by low-income Americans as a housing expert and advocate. I get hundreds and hundreds of questions every week from low-income people, people who are homeless in their cars with their children, asking how they can get housing, and I answer as many of them as I can. I've devoted my life to this. I have never, in 30 years of developing affordable housing on the eastern shore and all over the mid-Atlantic, had such a difficult time with a chief executive officer of a municipality going at, to any length, any length, to kill the project, sir. Yes, you apologized. It means nothing to me, because your word is no good with me. You have, over and over and over, attempted to get out of a binding contract, because you don't care about contracts, you don't care about signatures, and you don't care about your word. I implore this body to move forward with this tonight, because we can't trust him to go to closing on Wednesday. He's already set himself up. He said if there's something in the commitment that he doesn't like, he might not do it. He's qualified his actions. And I implore you to purchase a free insurance policy against his untrustworthy word and pass this resolution to protect the city, because if it doesn't close this week, I promise you, we are moving forward with a specific performance lawsuit, where the city gets to pay for our legal fees if we win, and we will also sue for $1.2 million in damages for all the pre-development expenses we've expended on the good word of the city and your council saying, and now tonight, you saying that you're going to move forward. And talk about being kind. Being kind is telling the truth. And the truth is that Jake Day is the one that identified that the property was falling apart. Jake Day is the one that decided that it should go and be surplus. Jake Day is the one that got you all to get this done. There's a reason, 10 seconds. There's a reason why Jake Day is the Secretary of Housing for the state of Maryland, and that's because he was Maryland's housing mayor.
Mr. Layfield.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And I think we have a comment online. Is that correct, Mr. Kitchrow?
That's correct.
Okay.
Jared, if you're there.
Hey, Jared, are you there?
Hey, can I have a mic?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Wonderful. My apologies, I'm still stuck at work. So my name is Jared Shablon, and I'm a proud resident of District One here in the city of Salisbury since January of this year. Many of us are speaking tonight, because we've noticed a change in Salisbury's commitment to affordable housing and addressing the housing shortage. I lived in Salisbury as a young professional. I love the city and the community that we're building here. I'm here today to talk about a challenge that many people my age face, and that's the struggle to find affordable housing and stay in the place that we want to call home. As a young professional, I've seen firsthand how difficult it is for people like me to find affordable housing in our city. It's not just a problem for a few. Many of my peers who are trying to establish careers, start families, build their lives here are struggling with this issue. Affordable housing isn't just an economic concern, it's essential to keep talented, hard-working individuals here in our community, not on the western shore, not in Sussex County, not in other states, to continue the growth and vibrance in our community. The lack of affordable housing threatens our future. Like the situation at Mitchell's Landing, the issue is more than just about a place to live. It's about creating stability, security, and opportunity for everyone, regardless of age, regardless of income. Affordable housing and more housing units in general is vital to a thriving community. It's essential people put down their roots, focus on their careers, start family, and give back to our community. I urge the council to continue and reprioritize affordable housing initiatives. By doing so, you're not only addressing an immediate concern, but also investing in Salisbury's long-term success. Affordable housing is foundational to keeping people like me and many others in this community. Thank you for your continued efforts and for listening to the voices of young professionals who want to remain in Salisbury where we can all thrive. David Layfield is correct in his speech about us not being able to trust the mayor's words. We need the council, this body, to lead. The ball is in your court, and the lights are on you. Will you lead?
Is that all the comments?
Yeah, that is all the comments.
At this time, I'd like to just go back and do a consensus. I'm going to start with Councilwoman DeShield. Do we move this forward?
I don't see a need for the resolution, no.
Okay. Jackson, Ms. Councilwoman Jackson?
I'm going to be perfectly honest. Mayor, I'm going, I'm good too. I'm going to be good, because I'm going to do what's right. We do need that extra support. I do take his word, but a word can be null and void. You know, you can read that, the whatever, what is he reading, the commitment letter? Like they said, you might find something in it that you may not, you may disagree, even if when you're reading. No, 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 let me finish. You may find something, and you say you're trying to understand, but if it's something that you do understand and you don't agree with it, you have that right to say, "Okay, I'm not doing it." You have that right. And I don't want to be put in the middle, because I want this project to be completed. I don't care who gets upset about how I vote or whatever, I'm doing what's right for my district and the people that reside in my district. And I have to be that person, because if nobody else looks out for them, if I don't, who else is going to look out for them? And it's not that I don't trust you, it's just I want to make sure that this is done, and done in the ample amount of time. It may take you two days to go through the thing and get somebody to explain it to you. We have a deadline of 9/11, and I want to have this done. I don't want no procrastination. I don't want to hear, "Well, there's something in it that I don't, still don't understand." Uh-uh, uh-uh, no, no, no. I'm not going for that one. And like I said, it's not that I don't trust you, but sometimes I can't even trust myself. Okay? So I'm just, I'm going to be perfectly armed with you. I'm going for the resolution.
Councilwoman Gregory?
Yes.
And I is yes. So there is a consensus to move this forward, and I think it'll be read in the legislative session this evening. And with that, the meeting is, the special meeting, excuse me, the special meeting is And it is 6:58 PM.